Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to Albany City Council Meeting on October 27th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And like the call to me to order and councillor Olson will be doing the puzzle relations for us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, kind sir. So there's a roll call, please. Who we waiting for? Allison, you're on mute.
There we go. All right. I'm sorry. Councillor Kupczynski. Councillor Johnson. Councillor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Olson.
Here.
Councillor Novak.
Here.
Councillor Bartholomew.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you. So we have a couple of proclamations today. The first one is the Native American Heritage Month. Do you put a slide together, Matthew? Yep. There you go. Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of our rich legacy throughout the United States and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designing designated the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month and whereas in honor of Native American, National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural and artistic, educational, and historic activities have been planned. Now therefore, I Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month and urge all citizens to observe this month as appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And witness their aware of, I hereby unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this day, 27th day of October, 2021. Alexander D. Johnson, Mayor. Next proclamation is Extra Mile Day. And councillor Kupczynski, could you read this one? Because he went the extra mile by driving back and forth from Albany, New York. You there?
Okay.
You gonna read it?
It just says extra mile. Okay. Whereas Albany, Oregon is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service and whereas Albany, Oregon is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community and whereas Albany, Oregon is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community and whereas Albany, Oregon acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Now therefore, I Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021 as Extra Mile Day in Albany, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness their worth, whereof I here to unto here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 27th day of October, 2021. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Kupczynski. An extra mile is really important. We saw it last year during the wildfires. We're seeing it this year. What's going on in our current world? And I do appreciate every one of you councillors, city staff, and people that volunteer for the city while we need the carousel, get the different shelters around town. So thank you very much. And next in the agenda, special presentations, Civilian Life saving Awards with Chief, Vortu Shane.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. It's not a part of my prepared remarks, but I do find it fitting that the proclamation with the Extra Mile Day, given that we are going to be recognizing people that have gone the extra mile, that have done things that maybe the average person wouldn't do, but they rose to the occasion. So I find it very fitting that today would be the day that we recognize them. So Mayor, council, and emergency services, time is of the essence. For every minute a fire goes unnoticed, it grows exponentially. For every minute someone isn't breathing, the likelihood of survival decreases by 10%. In an emergency, time is the ultimate difference maker. It's unrealistic to think the Albany Fire Department is able to begin, immediately begin lifesaving efforts anytime an emergency happens. It takes time for us to get there. Sometimes the best chance of a fire staying small or someone surviving a significant incident is a willingness of those around to jump into action. Tonight, we are recognizing four people from three different incidents. They each decided to jump into action, putting others ahead of themselves, and ultimately making a significant difference in our community. So to start, if I could, I'd like to ask Daniel Overston and Paul Ramirez to come up, please. Both Ms. Overston and Mr. Ramirez live on Third Avenue here in Albany. Get out of the way here. So if I could, I'm just going to read a little bit about what happened the night or the day of July 13th. Albany Fire Department responded on a structured fire. Upon our arrival, there was light smoke showing from a second-story balcony. Prior to our arrival, Mr. Ramirez and Ms. Overston, living next door to the apartment that was on fire, heard crackling and saw smoke. They quickly secured and applied three fire extinguishers and used water from a nearby garden hose to keep the fire from growing. Ms. Overston made a comment to the crews that her annual fire extinguisher training had paid off. And as a side note, as a fire chief, there's a portion of the fire code that requires extinguishers be accessible in a multifamily unit. Well, this is why it paid off, the training and the extinguishers being available. But more importantly than that, you have, or more importantly, you can have available fire extinguishers, but it takes someone with courage to jump into action. In this case, Ms. Overston and Mr. Ramirez's actions that day prevented many people from losing their homes and their possessions. So both of you, your actions that day helped prevent significant loss to your neighbors. And on behalf of the Albany Fire Department and Fire Chief, I'd like to give you a certificate that is a civilian certificate of appreciation. Signed by myself and Mayor Alex Johnson II. So Mr. Ramirez, there you go. Ms. Overston, I'd like to give this to you the same. And then also, I'd like to present you with the challenge coin. On behalf of the Albany Fire Department, we are extremely fortunate that you live in our community and that you rose to the occasion. So thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So unfortunately, the next person who we were going to recognize wasn't able to make it today. We've been trying to work with this person for a while. They work in, they do wildland firefighting, and so they spent most of the summer gone. And then we found out today that he wasn't going to be able to make the trip from Hermiston here. But he is an Albany, a past Albany resident and has family that live here in town. And if you would indulge me, I'd love just to read his story so then I can connect with him and give him his certificate and his challenge coin. So this gentleman's name is Curtis Ostland. He is, he'll be receiving the civilian lifesaving award and an Albany Fire Department challenge coin. And on June 18th, 2021, while recreating on the Caliponia River near Hazelwood Park, Mr. Ostland heard a scream and went around the bend to investigate the noise. Once around the bend, he noticed a young boy who was a family friend struggling in the water. Initially, the victim was submerged but still trying to swim. When Mr. Ostland reached the victim, he was floating in the water face down and not moving. Mr. Ostland swam out to the boy and then towed his lifeless body to the shore. Knowing the boy was not breathing and still unconscious, he began CPR and rescue breathing. After about two minutes, Mr. Ostland stayed with the, or about two minutes, the victim coughed up water, started breathing, and eventually started talking. Mr. Ostland stayed with the 13-year-old until our crews could make access to the river's edge and continued treatment. I mean, without a doubt, 100% certainty, Mr. Ostland's actions that day saved a 13-year-old boy's life. So, you know, if he were here, we would applaud, just so proud to have people like this living in our community that step up when, when they're called and extremely, extremely grateful for him. So we may be making a trip to Hermiston to recognize him in front of maybe the fire department there, but we'll, we'll make sure we get that to him. So sometimes in life you have the best plan and it doesn't always work out the way that you want it to. Well, this is one of those cases where the third person of their third incident, fourth person that we wanted to recognize, let us know that they just got off work and they're on their way here. So Mayor, with your permission, would you be okay if the, maybe you move on to the next?
Yes, chief. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, just let me know when they get here.
Thank you.
All right. My mouse back in the right place. Next on today's agenda is a quasi judicial here. Oops, I'm sorry. I go back. It's Human Relations Commission Awards by Director Ladain. I apologize for the slip.
Totally good. Well, good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. As you can see, our Chair Stephanie Newton is online as well. And actually, I'm just going to introduce her and give you a little backstory. So typically, on any other normal year, we would have presented HRC awards, but 2020, as we know, was not a normal year, both due to the pandemic as well as our hiatus for a little while. But that doesn't mean people weren't doing amazing work. So we, as we regrouped, we put out a call for applications and we are here to award tonight. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our Chair Stephanie Newton and enjoy.
Thank you so much, Director Ladain. I really appreciate your introduction and thank you so much, council, for letting me come before you today. I also want to echo what Chief Luton said. It is so fitting that we are going to be awarding the runners-up and then, and the winners of our individual and organization Human Relations Commission Award on the same day that we've proclaimed that November 1st is Extra Mile Day. So I wanted to give a quick, brief history on this award and what the criteria are. So the Albany Human Relations Commission, we want to recognize individuals and Albany organizations. This can be nonprofits or businesses that have worked to strengthen our connections here in Albany through in our diverse community. And really by being committed to what our mission is here at the Human Relations Commission, which is our philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity, fair treatment for all residents here in Albany. So let's go ahead and move forward with the runner-up for the HRC individual award. Let me get my notes. So the runner-up is Melinda Martin. And I wanted to read the words of the person that nominated her. Melinda is the epitome of what it means to be a good Samaritan and pillar of the community. Listing all her voluntary activities would make a list so long, you'd be reading it for days. Melinda tirelessly gives her time and quietly gives her treasure to the community, all while being a social media promoter of the greater Albany area, local businesses, and nonprofits. And I also want to echo that I, if any of you guys have gone to Margin, she is frequently there. And I've always, what I've told Gabe, the owner of Margin, sometimes I've said, hey, I just want to have whatever Melinda had today. She's got me hooked on matches. So, but she's just always a positive force in our community. And next, we have the winner of our award. Oh, and I wanted to mention as well, for both the runners-up, for the organization and the individual, we have certificates at the Parks and Recreation Desk at the City of Albany. And for the winner for the individual award, we have Heather Carmichael. Fancy award. And I would love to read also what her nominee wrote. Heather began her advocacy work first for her daughter, and then as her eyes were open to the needs for advocacy within the diverse areas of our town, she saw education, understanding, in order to better care for the underrepresented groups in our community. She sees needs and seeks to help. She has intentionally built relationships with leaders across all spectrums in order to help people's voices be heard and to improve the systems within Albany. She has a passion for making Albany come together to unite in a desire for and work towards growth, kindness, compassion, empathy, and improvement. In the past year and a half, she partnered with the Salvation Army through her work at The Grove to feed evacuees at the fairgrounds during the fires. She moderated the conversation between our police chief and DA to help build understanding between these agencies and our community in regards to racial injustice. She works with the school district, leadership, or police chief, the N W A C P, and countless other groups and leaders to bring unity and understanding in order to make sure all people, groups in Albany receive not only representation, but their own voice as well. Heather is doing valuable work and leaving ripple effects that will be felt by generations to come. We are so blessed to have people like Heather and people like Melinda as members of our community. So thank you both so much. Moving on to the organization. So our runners-up for the Human Relations Commission Organization category is Jackson Street Youth Services. And I'd love to also read what their nominee wrote. So helping youth 24/7/365 is not just the tagline for Jackson Street Youth Services. And while we all long for a day when the services provided by them are not needed within our community, we're blessed to have them helping younger generations. They serve children that are unhoused or in need of additional services that are ages 10 to 24. All right. And so our award for the HRC organization is the Albany Picks Theater owned by Rod and Denise Bigner. And they were actually nominated by two people in our community. So I'm going to go ahead and read quickly what they both wrote. So the Picks Theater deserves the HRC award because they have so much support for the LGBTQ community. They don't just advertise to our community, they show up and support. And the next nominee wrote, "The Albany Picks Theater deserves the Human Relations Commission Award because Denise and Rod Bigner are devoted to providing a variety of inclusive movies that not only showcase the human condition, but exposes the viewer to diversity. There is always something for everyone. They are intimately involved in every aspect of the moviegoer's experience. You can see Denise behind the snack counter or chatting with customers, and Rod will sell you a ticket out front. We recently watched a special movie premiere for Pride Weekend, and Rod personally introduced the movie, provided history and informative notes for the viewer to enjoy the movie even more. They take their passion out of the movie theater and show up in the community to support marginalized, victimized, and discriminated people by attending such events as the Black Lives Matter Rally, a candlelight vigil as a result of a hate crime, and most recently Albany Pride in 2021." These are only a few examples of the passion for our community that I've witnessed. There are many people in Albany committed to inclusion, so it may make it, oh, may make it difficult to decide, but Rod and Denise are shining examples of compassionate communitarians. And here is the award for the Picks Theater. And I forgot to go to my next slide. I apologize for that. Congratulations, Jackson Street Youth Services and the Albany Picks Theater. I appreciate the work that both of these organizations do. And again, I feel so fortunate that we have businesses and nonprofits in our community that contribute and serve so many people here within Albany and, you know, really have a ripple, ripple effect throughout the entire Willamette Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Newton. I would like to also extend appreciation from the city council, myself, for the work done by those individuals and also those organizations within the city limits. And it's really nice to see people giving back and helping the community move forward. And with much, we must be better together. And that's one of the ways to do it. Thank you. Okay. My mouse is moving weird. Am I breaking up?
You're not for me.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a quasi judicial hearing, public hearing regarding planning file, files CP 02-20. Yes.
It looks like, it looks like the fire station is ready.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm reading this document. Or go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, just so you know, I'm not the fire chief, just in case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The fire department. Hello. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. The carbon and our double teaming on this one. We both felt very strongly about this award. So Nick here is giving a double word from both of us and also from the American nonprofits. They're, they will be sending a word your way. So you felt very strongly about this award. I'll do a little synopsis here and then let Chief Luton talk a little bit about their perspective on this. On August 23rd, 2021, at about 7:25 PM, officers with the Police Department and Fire Department staff were dispatched to a water rescue around North Shore Drive. The dispatch notes were as follows. Five-year-old female, conscious unknown, breathing status unknown. Caller statement, little girl fell in the water. She's out now. Through the investigation, we learned that Ry Lynn, who is five, fell into Swan Lake while unattended by his family. He lives with, with them directly adjacent to the north, just a few feet from Swan Lake. A woman in the complex was barbecuing behind her residence, and she saw the little boy go into the water and began to scream and ask for help. Nick Webster here was walking near the lake, heard her cries for help, and came to the rescue. His immediate actions of jumping into the water and pulling the child to safety, also administering a rescue breath, which caused the child to expel all water in their lungs, immediately resulting in the savior of this young child. His selfless act and caring for another are examples for all of us. You felt very strongly that from our patrol staff that sent this nomination up, I talked to Chief Luton back when this happened. We both confer. This is a wonderful act of bravery. If he hadn't been there, we're not sure what would have happened. And, and just talking to him when he got in, he's come from work. It was quite a scary experience for him. But he took the initiative, saw something was wrong, and acted on it. And as Chief Luton said earlier, when it comes to saving lives, every second counts. And so we're always very grateful for citizens who are willing to risk their own safety to do what's right by others around them. So I'll allow Chief Luton to come in and talk for a second, and then we have something for you.
All right, Mr. Webster, what I have here, well, first off, let me explain to you and the council how we got here. So in the Fire Department, we have a nomination process that when our crews see somebody go above and beyond employee or civilian, they come back and they write up a report. That report goes in front of a committee to review, to make sure that whatever is being written up reaches the threshold of actually of reaching the threshold of the award, the criteria of the award. In your case, it was unanimous. Everybody thought you were most certainly deserving of a civilian lifesaving award. Signed by myself and Mayor Alex Johnson II. And as well, I'd love to give you a challenge coin from the Albany Fire Department and just extremely grateful for you being in our community. So thank you.
Here's one from us as well. So that, very rare that these come out to the civilians. They, they're quite special and it's my honor and on behalf of the so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Mayor, thank you very much. I don't know if you have any words, and then I'll, I'll give back to you.
Thank you very much, chiefs. We greatly appreciate you recognizing this gentleman for his effort, his valiant effort to save a child's life. And the City of Albany is quite grateful for you to be there for that family and respond the way you did. So I'd love to take you out for a cup of coffee. Have them give my number. We'll get together for a cup of coffee. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the, I can say it now for the first time, right? Next on the agenda is, our agenda is a quasi, quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files CP 02-21 and ZC 02-21. The request is to change the comprehensive plan designation of residential 1.37 acres of one of 1.3 acre parcel from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And the remaining 1.01 acre, 650 square feet, from general commercial to MDR mixed, mixed density residential. This application includes concurrent zoning map amendment to the same parcel that would change 1.37 acres of the residential, single-family zoning to residential medium-density and point one acres, point zero one acre from community commercial to residential medium-density commercial. The, the, the property is located at 241 Waverly Drive Southeast. I call to order a quasi judicial hearing at 6:27 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available, which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Councillor Bartholomew?
Yes, I need to recuse myself for a potential conflict of interest at a future date. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I would, so there she goes. All right. Do any members wish to report a ex parte contact? I think she's already left. Do any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or participation in any city council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera, raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be recalled upon. Hearing now, I'll move on. At this time, I call the reading of the meeting procedures.
I'm happy to do that reading, Mayor, if you'd like. Matthew is not available tonight.
Please do, Mr. Martin.
Okay. Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for a staff report from project planner David Martin.
Okay. I'd like to share my screen here. Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, good evening. This won't be a very long presentation. This is a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment and the property that's involved is located at, okay. I'm very sorry again for, I checked, I tested this app earlier and it doesn't seem to be working the way it needs to. So. Okay, we'll do it that way. So the property in question is along Waverly Drive and it is about midway between Salem Avenue and Pacific Boulevard. And so the proposal is to change the low-density residential portion of the property to medium-density residential. And there's just a tiny sliver of property on the southeast side of this property that is actually zoned or designated general commercial. And that was due to a lot line adjustment some years ago when a fence was relocated with the motel property to the south. So as a consequence, just a little piece of that property ended up on the altered land. And then that comprehensive plan map amendment would be followed by a zoning map amendment to change the zoning on both of those pieces of land to residential medium-density. Existing land uses in the area, there's the Valvoline oil change establishment there closest to the corner on Waverly and Pacific. Mutual Sgracius Restaurant and a subway on the west side of Waverly there. A motel to the south of the property and then a vacant car wash is located somewhere just south of the actual altered property. The bulk of the development in the area is existing older, single-family residences and multifamily residences, some of which are two-story, many of which are one-story. And this property has kind of been bypassed over the years, does have a house on it. But there's, you know, infill property. It's 1.38 acres of land that is designated for residential use. So finally, the point I'd like to make about this, and I think it's where we come up with the strongest support for this particular application, is if you look on this map here, you'll see areas around the vicinity that's all designated in the light yellow color, the low-density residential. And then you find along our busier corridors like Pacific Boulevard and Waverly. There is there, which stands for general commercial. So these are lands that have a lot more intensive uses than the low-density residential that are more in the neighborhoods further back. But then you'll notice here that there's also transitional areas where you have higher-density residential that abuts commercial or public land that serves as a good buffer between the commercial types of uses and the lower-density residential. And so from the planning aspect, we believe that the subject property is really ripe for the nation-like medium-density residential to accommodate higher-density residential. It does service a buffer between the commercial and the lower-density residential. So this is a quasi judicial application, meaning that we're looking at the rights of one property owner based on citywide standards. And so we are considering this as a judicial kind of application. The decision-making criteria for this is found in the Development Code Section 2.220 Sub 3 and the zoning map amendment criteria is found in ADC 2.740. Agency notice was sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development and other agencies with jurisdiction back on August 26th. We sent public notification for this hearing to 39 property owners within 300 feet of this property and those were sent out on September 13th. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing duly advertised and that hearing was held October 4th. And they voted six to zero in favor of recommending that City Council consider adoption of this amendment. And so in conclusion, we believe all the applicable criteria met. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment. And so your options here would be either to approve the proposed amendments or you can deny the amendment applications. So at that time, is, are there any questions?
Counselor Smith was the first one to raise her hand. The Counselor Novak.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question was related to the letter from Pam Briggs regarding the trees. I had wondered about that myself, but I believe the trees wouldn't be addressed at this time. They would, that issue would come up when we have a specific development proposal. Is that correct?
It is correct. Unfortunately, we're a little more hamstrung than we used to be as far as being able to save trees with residential development because of changes in state law that don't allow us to use subjective review criteria when looking at tree felling in conjunction with residential. We do however, have a set of standards that are clear and objective that a developer could choose to follow, which actually has dimensional standards whereby trees could be preserved or removed depending on the proximity to utilities and parking and buildings and things like that.
Good to know. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So Counselor Novak, Counselor Kupczynski, and then Counselor Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to get a little clarification because you said we have the option of passing this or denying it. I also thought there was an option to pass it with an amendment, like such as regarding those trees or such as what Pam Briggs had requested. Is that not the case?
It is the case, actually. Yes, you are right. You can pass it with conditions or there haven't been any proposed, but council certainly has the freedom to do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, David, I guess my question is it's maybe too soon to even consider it, but I didn't notice it in reading the material. Is there any consideration or what? What effect possibly could HB 2001 have on making this happen or not?
Yeah, so there are options under House Bill 2001, which a person could avail themselves of, provided that the code amendments that are prepared or being proposed now end up being adopted, say by spring. So the property is one lot and it's total of 1.38 acres. Just with conventional, single-family detached development, they could get about eight units an acre. Not an acre, I'm sorry, on the 1.38 acres, they can get about eight detached, single-family dwelling units on that property. They can get about 34 if the zone change is approved as multifamily development. Now with minimum lot sizes, say between 5,000, 7,000 square feet for property in the RS 6.5 zone, there could be options for duplexes, triplexes. All of the middle housing that you've been hearing about, even the cottage cluster. Probably the most density, if density is an issue, would probably still be gained by having multifamily development on it, but there are certainly going to be other development options on this property.
Thank you very much, David. Anything else, Counselor Kupczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson, you were next.
Yes, I just want to say that on the last paragraph of page seven, it says the applicant further justifies the request by noting a deficiency of medium-density housing in the city's housing needs and analysis. The need for media-density housing can be met by rezoning lower-density land in places where it makes sense and services are readily available. I believe from what David said is there was, I mean, there are apartments not too far away and I believe that this is a good way to help us with House Bill 2001 to get the different housing types in there. And so I think they, actually, I think it's gonna be a good thing and I think they will, sounds like they've done their due diligence and will treat it as would be an asset to the city. Thank you.
Counselor, is still up?
Yes, sir. I guess I just want to say that I would be in favor of this. I know we need more housing, absolutely, but I kind of want to, I'm wondering if we couldn't make some sort of happy medium where we have increased like duplexes, triplexes, cottage cluster, whatever in that area. And I think that was the, the main point I got from the, the letter from Ms. Briggs was that she just didn't want it to go up high, like three stories. If we could keep it to two stories in those different types of dwellings and multifamily units, that would increase the medium, you know, to medium-density, but put a cap on how high it goes. Like it just stays like a two-story house, no higher. I would be in favor of that and I don't know if that requires amending what's been put forth. And if so, then, then that's something that I would suggest.
Any other counselors have anything? All my comments is I like the plan. I think it's going to help us with having places for people to move into. I look at the numbers every day on far as cost of living, cost of real estate, cost of properties, rental apartments. And we need more apartments. I think the 40 units or 25 units they can put in there will be taken really fast. And so I have no changes to make recommend. I think the next step in this would be, we will now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please state your name, address and make any comments you may have for the council?
Absolutely. Good evening, Council. I am Hayden Wooten with Recent Associates. Our address is 321 First Avenue East, Suite 3A, Albany, Oregon. I'd like to start by thanking David for his staff report and all the work he's done on the project so far. We really appreciate the clear line of communication and everything he's done to work through this process with it. We've had an opportunity to review the staff report and we agree with all the findings presented. I just, they've been touched on in conversation so far, but I'd like to reiterate a couple of points. I believe our benefits of this zone change and that is it addresses Albany's need for medium-density housing. The housing needs analysis identifies a need for, on the lowest growth rate, 269 units and 25 acres of medium-density land. And the more aggressive growth rate identifies a need of 895 units and 84 acres of land. And while those are huge numbers and we're dealing with an acre and a half property, any step we can take to address those numbers is going to be a huge help to Albany's community. Additionally, because of the size of this project, another one of its benefits are lower traffic impacts than rezoning bulk areas of land. We're only going to generate approximately six additional PM peak hour trips through the zone change and only four of those to the Waverly Saniam intersection. And so the overall traffic impact in this zone change is minimized. Additionally, as David pointed out in his staff report, this provides a great opportunity to buffer some of the existing low-density housing from the more intense commercial uses to the south. And to address kind of some of the other things that had come up, we actually believe there would be a benefit to medium-density housing on a vegetated parcel like this. Some of the more flexible design standards and less restrictive lot sizes allow the developer to navigate the site in a way that could preserve vegetation if that was their intention. Additionally, height is another one of those things that has come up as a concern. Right now, there would be a 15-foot height difference between the maximum height of the two zones. In the RS 6.5 zone, the maximum height is 30 feet and it is 45 feet in the RM zoning district. So realistically, we're looking only about story difference. And with that, I think I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
So at this time, the agenda calls for taking, taking public testimony. And after that, we'll go on to get more testimony. So we'll now take public, taking public testimony, first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition to it or with concerns, and following from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter exhibit into the record as part of the testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the CDA, CDAA@cityofalbany.net. I didn't see anyone that signed up to speak publicly. Am I correct in that, Allison? I guess that's true.
There I am. Jessica sent you a sign-up sheet that had Ms. Briggs' name on it. I don't know if she still wants to speak.
I'll pull that up. So Ms. Briggs, are you going to turn on your microphone and speak? That's the council. It'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am opposed to the zoning change for 241 Waverly Drive Southeast. I live on Lake Street, that's one block east of Waverly. While I oppose this zoning change, I do want to be clear that I recognize and I support the need for additional residential and multifamily affordable housing in Albany. I know that that's important and I think that this lot is ideally suited, ideally suited because of its size and location for multifamily housing. But I believe that that goal can be accomplished within the constraints of the current zoning designation of low-density residential. And I believe that the proposed zoning change to medium-density residential will have several negative impacts on those living in the neighborhood. The residential neighborhood in this area is bordered by Pacific Boulevard on the south and Salem on the north. And it's primarily one-story, single-family homes with a few duplexes, several small, single-story apartments. There are only five two-story homes in the immediate area. Changing this lot from low-density to medium-density could have a significant impact on the neighborhood. The zoning designation allows for two-story multifamily housing. The medium-density would allow not only for a greater number of housing units on the lot, but would also allow three-story buildings. My primary concern is the height. It really puts it out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. And it, in my opinion, the only one that really benefits from the proposed zoning change that allows that is the developer that then has the ability to squeeze as many units as possible, up to three stories tall in this lot. And that would result in the loss of the, you know, real quiet family fill of the neighborhood. I am concerned about the trees. I hate to see them go. I know that that may be an issue that would have to be addressed later. But it would be a tremendous loss to lose those trees. I also believe the traffic impact will be much bigger than what is has been stated. Waverly Street between Pacific and Salem Avenue is only over a block long with a stop sign at one end and a traffic light at the other. It does not take much traffic to create congestion that's dangerous and disruptive to the neighborhood on that very small one block. And it's routinely can, very congested at certain times of the day, to the point that I already avoid driving on it whenever possible. Adding a significant number of cars, if there's 30 apartments in that small lot coming in and out of that one block area between the stop sign and the stoplight, that I believe is going to create significant traffic congestion. This lot is, is really a good buffer zone between our quiet residential neighborhood and the neighboring commercial area. And I believe the current zone zoning, which allows for multifamily homes, duplexes, you know, other units allows for the perfect buffer zone. Increasing that to a medium-density, I think will make it out of place in the neighborhood. And I don't think that that creates a good buffer zone. I think that creates a negative aspect for the neighborhood. Again, just in closing, I really want to be clear, I'm not opposed to development of the property. I'm opposed primarily to the number of units and the height of the units there. And I believe that keeping it as a low-density residential lot would allow And I believe that keeping it as a low-density residential lot would allow for the type of multifamily housing that would more adequately complement and fit in well with the neighborhood rather than detract from it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Briggs. Appreciate it. Ms. Briggs. We will not be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon by the chair and unmuted. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself, state your name, and so I can recognize you to speak. Let's see, anybody else on here? So hearing none. I will want the next item. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak mutually of the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Yeah, I will make one last comment about the height. I think it's important to note that when future development occurs, it will have to follow the appropriate processes Albany sets forth for that type of development. If the future developer does choose to construct true multifamily units, they'll have to comply with the appropriate setbacks and the appropriate buffering and screening standards to ensure that their proposed units fit nicely in the neighborhood and do not cause a negative impact on their surroundings. And so while at this time, we would prefer not to hinder that future developer's ability to address Albany's housing needs, I think it is important to note there will be standards in the future that ensure conformance.
Thank you very much. Does any staffer wish to respond to the testimony presented?
Sure, just a couple of points, if I may. Hayden actually stole the thunder a little bit on something I was going to bring up. But if the development does turn out to be multifamily development, the design standards that we have in Article Eight require that that development be at least one foot for each foot in building height from a shared property line to a maximum required setback of thirty feet. So that is one method that we use in creating a buffer between multifamily and single-family residential. And there are existing single-family residences to the north of this, and so those would be the ones, since they were built before January first of two thousand twenty-one, that would have the benefit of that additional buffer setback area should multifamily development be done. Also, the stretch of Waverly Drive between Salem Avenue and Pacific is about eight hundred and twenty feet in length, so it's closer to three blocks. So I just wanted to bring that up, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, David. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can call upon you to speak.
Just a quick note. I've gotten a comment via email. Somebody says that the YouTube feed is down, that they cannot see or hear anything. I don't know if that's our issue or YouTube.
Thanks, Ray. I'll check into it.
That's a Matt Harrington issue. I declare, at this time, I declare the public hearing closed at six fifty-four PM and on the October twenty-seventh. Now, does the council wish to discuss this case or ask questions of staff? I see Counselor Olson has his hand up first.
I'd like to ask staff. We have a shortage of affordable housing in Albany. And is it rental housing we're looking for, or are we looking for a homeownership kind of housing? And I would like to say that I agree with Thomas Jefferson, even though he did own slaves, that homeownership is preferable to being a renter. So I'm wondering if Mr. Martino could tell us where our shortages lie.
I believe that our most recent housing needs analysis that was completed in two thousand twenty would argue that both types of housing is needed. We need both owner-occupied and rental housing. There's a lot of people that can't afford to buy a house, even when the prices start coming down. So maybe their only option is rental housing. That's more of a personal opinion, not based on fact, but I can tell you in our housing needs analysis, both types of housing are sorely needed.
Okay. So could I ask? I don't think it's Mr. Reese, but his representative. Are any of these units that that you're planning to put up here, are any of them for sale?
There won't be any units proposed at this time, and I am unsure what the developer's future intentions are for this property.
Okay, I would guess, being apartment houses, that none of it will be for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Johnson was next.
Yes, thank you. I was thinking that as I was listening to this, that, you know, about the the concern about the height. You know, we do have an urban growth boundary that we have to build within. And the future is going to have to, I mean, as we grow, the future is going to have to be to build up. And so I think this sounds reasonable, but you know, no matter what, they, after they go through the other steps, they could change their mind and do something else. But I do think that going, you know, three stories isn't too bad unless you're living right next door. But also, too, with the traffic, I was thinking that, yeah, there might be thirty apartments, but not everybody leaves at the same time. And so I think it's going to be, you know, yeah, if everybody left at the same time in the morning or came home at night, because most people, most abodes have two cars, you know, two people working different jobs. And so that could be a problem, but I don't think that everyone's going to leave at the same time. So I think it's a good project, and it sounds like it's going to fit in, they're going to fit in as well as they can, if that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Smith, you have your hand up next.
I did. Thank you. This is, I hate pounding on this, but I wanted to remind people that we're not, there is nothing, no development before us. No buildings, no traffic patterns, no cars, no bicycles, nothing. This is a request for a zone change to allow something to occur, but the applicants have not proposed a development at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, counsel.
I was next on the agenda.
Sorry, Counselor Kupczynski.
Okay, just as a segue from what Counselor Johnson mentioned just a few minutes ago, the, we had an A A M P O meetings this afternoon, and one of the ODOT representatives there in passing as part of the conversations you're having indicated that by two thousand forty, the state worrying, expecting to have over one million more population. Albany will get its fair share, to say the least. We cannot not plan for that to happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson, you raise your hand again.
Yes, I was just gonna say, I if there's no other discussion, I would move that the ordinance be read the first time and title only.
Is there a second? City Attorney? Please read the ordinance.
I sure will. And Mayor, can you help with me on what page that's on? Or Allison, can you tell me what page that's on?
Page, page six.
No, no.
Page fifty?
Fifty.
It's up there, like page fifty or four forty-nine.
Yes.
Well, as as fate would have it, my, the reason, and I was, I'm actually trying to buy time because my computer screen went blank on me. So, but I will, let me see if I can get to it.
Your hand is still up. Do you have more?
Was there, was there someone else?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
An ordinance submitting number four eight three six, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and Amending Ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the city zoning map by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and zoning map and adopting the property location county assessors map number one one S dash zero three W dash zero five D D tax lot four hundred.
I moved that there ordinance you read a second time and title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
You have motion and a second?
Just have a vote on that.
So all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. We have one no. Are you raising your hand? Are you voting? Counselor Olson, are you raising your hand? Are you voting?
I am turned off. I'm voting no.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, and I like to say that if you give a person permission to do something unfortunate, they may not do it, but you've given them permission to do it. So I think building to the maximum on this piece of property would be unfortunate, so I'm voting no.
Okay. City, city clerk, Allison?
Thank you. Could we do a roll call vote? I only heard a couple of voices, so just to make it super clear.
Those in favor?
Thank you. Could we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
All right, good. Kupczynski?
Yes.
Bessie Johnson? Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Olson?
No, and that's all you need to put it off till next time.
Right. Novak?
I would say no, because I don't want it to go over two stories.
Thank you. Bartholomew. Oh, she's recused. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll bring it back next time. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Let me read that statement.
Just, just a comment by taking that first one off, that automatically precludes us moving, going to the page six ordinance, amending the comprehensive plan map.
It does, doesn't it? So city attorney, will that shut down the other one as well?
Mr. Mayor, the the attorney was kicked out by technical difficulties, so he's trying to get back in.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to say that I had left earlier, but not by choice. My computer kicked me out, so fortunately, I was able to get back.
So so city clerk, will that preclude us from doing the other one?
Thank you. I'm only seeing the one.
The other one, too.
Which adopted the City of Albany Comp Plan map and it says it amends the Albany Comprehensive Plan and zoning map.
It takes both of them.
Right, but the comp plan, David, if you're still here, the comp plan would be the CP part of the public hearing, and the zoning map would be the ZC part of the public hearing.
Yes, but they're both contained on the same ordinance.
Right.
Sometimes you have a zoning amendment that that just is already consistent with the comp plan, but then there's other occasions when you actually need to do both.
So my question is, why do we have two ordinances on the same? Do I mean, do we have to vote on them separately, or are they actually, because they don't read the same?
There's just one ordinance, but both are contained on it.
So since it failed, the second reading. If I read it, if I'm listening correctly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring that back the next meeting.
Yes, we'll do that.
Yes, that's what we need to do.
So next on the agenda item will be business from the public. I'm going to get there. Business from the public. Persons wanting to address the council during business from the public and will provide written materials for public record must register to speak and attach materials to cityalbany.net council materials before knowing the day of the meeting. I received notice that there was no business from the public and no one signed up to speak today's meeting. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, adoption of resolutions. Will be reader, re-adopting financial policies. A director, Jager, our finance director, will be speaking to us on page fifty-one through eighty-eight of your packet.
Good evening. We discussed these at the work session on Monday, and I really don't have anything to add unless anybody has questions.
Is there, so you have to give us another staff report?
I could give you another staff report, but I think we discussed those pretty, pretty well on Monday.
All right, thank you. These could all be accepted in one single motion if the counselors prefer. Would the council, would the council like to make a motion? I have Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would move adoption of the resolution for the investment policies on page fifty-four, adoption of the risk management policy resolution on page seventy, and adoption of the financial policies resolution on page seventy-eight.
Second.
You have a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, number item, number eight on the agenda. Counselor, Novak, your hand was up?
Yeah, I guess I was a little bit too slow on the draw. I just wanted to get this in my head, but what we were referring to, and that was, the other day, we talked about how there were a number of firefighters and police or something that were not working and were being paid, and they had called out sick and workers' comp and all that. Was this referring to that discussion that we'd had?
No.
No? Am I lost in space? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry.
City manager?
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney is having a tough time getting back in, so you are without an attorney right now, but I'll let you know as soon as he, as soon as he makes it back.
Right, thank you. So the next is approval of the cooperative procurement, approval of cooperative procurement with Zoll ventilators. Kyle Rooney will be speaking to us, page eighty-four through eighty-five of your packet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight seeking an exemption from the competitive bidding requirements to use an existing cooperative procurement contract to purchase new ventilators for the city's employees. A little bit of backstory for this, the current ventilators are over sixteen years old and do not have the capabilities to treat many of the COVID-nineteen patients that we transport today. This is specifically a problem during our facility transports from Albany General Hospital when they have to go to other hospitals. This is something that we've been working collaboratively, collaboratively with Albany General to try and determine the solution, and really, the only solution is that we need to upgrade our ventilators. The ventilators we're requesting are a portable version, much like what you would see at the hospital.
Counselor Olson cannot hear you.
I'm having a very difficult time understanding what you're saying. I don't know if you're too far away from the microphone, too close, or if it's just poor equipment you got there in the fire department.
Hey, Kyle, are you on one of the all-in-one PCs?
Right.
Okay, do you have a microphone headphone combo there? Like headphone, okay.
I'm going to Chief Wooton's office, and I'll start him.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Counselor Olson, he's changed you to another office.
Oh, good. Cause I, I'd like to hear about those ventilators.
And Mayor, uh, this is Peter again. There's a lot of reports of connectivity problems from several other people besides, uh, Sean.
Okay. Okay, we'll adopt. Go ahead, please. Continue your test, your statements.
Okay, can you hear me now? Is this better?
Yeah, that's far better.
Okay, uh, changed computers, uh, technology shift. All right, thank you. I'll start over. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight is seeking an exemption, uh, from the competitive bidding requirements. And to use an existing cooperative procurement contract to purchase new ventilators for the city's ambulances. A little bit of backstory on this, our current ventilators are over sixteen years old. And do not have the capabilities to treat many of the COVID nineteen patients that we currently transport. Uh, this is a problem specifically during inter facility transports between Albany General and other hospitals. We've been working with Albany General to determine solutions. Uh, and really the only solution is that we need to upgrade our, our monitors due to their limited capabilities. Uh, the ventilators we're requesting to purchase are a portable version, much like what you would see, uh, if you were at the hospital today. Uh, they're customizable in many ways. Um, it to help maintain ventilations, adequate pressures and saturations for our patients. Uh, something that not everybody knows is that COVID nineteen patients that are currently on ventilators. Commonly require higher than normal pressures to adequately inflate their lungs. Our current ventilators don't provide that pressure, uh, but the ones that we're requesting, uh, to purchase, uh, do accomplish that and much more. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the, for, um, Ronnie? Rami. Any questions, counsel? None. Would, would the council like to make a motion?
My move that we approve the cooperative, uh, procurement agreement as written.
Seconded.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Those, those opposed say no. Thank you, Mr. Rami, for your testimony today. I greatly appreciate it, then, uh, looks like you got some ventilator.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I've got fussy ears. I wanted to hear about them.
Well, yeah, I was kind of broken up with his, with his computer. Next agenda is item nine, adoption of the consent calendar. Uh, Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I would like to remove, um. Let's see, nine, A. B and D, please.
Okay.
And then I. Do you want a motion to do the others? You want to wait to do them all?
So, uh, we have a motion, we can do, do the rest of them, so let's go C. And E, can a motion to approve C and E?
I would move to approve the, uh, consent calendar, nine, C and E.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Uh, number ten, staff report on the public outreach.
Back to the consent calendar, please.
Yes, go back to it.
Yes.
We have to.
Yeah.
Okay, counselor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the first one I wanted to do was nine D. Um, we're talking about. The low income assistance and I don't disagree with it, but. After reading it again, I saw that. Current, we have a hundred and fifty. And we're going, they, they say we're going up to fifteen hundred. Is that just an estimate? I mean, that's a lot of increase and. I'm thinking that. You know, at fifteen dollars a pop, that's. Not gonna cost us twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And so I'm wondering, uh, is that what we, is that what we pay now? Or is there a way? You know, I'm getting like a bargain deal on that, or is it a set price?
City manager?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Johnson, this is, we had, uh, talked about this on Monday. Because we have removed the criteria. That you must be either disabled or over the age of sixty. Uh, we are now able to provide this assistance to a much greater, uh, group of people, much broader group of people. Uh, we had been, uh, asked, we had been serving about one hundred and fifty under the old criteria. And it is estimated that that could grow by tenfold. You, you should also note that we reduced the, the, uh, threshold income from seventy percent of area median income down to sixty. So, uh, you, you have to, you have to make a little bit less money, but at the same time. Uh, that number of people that are going to be eligible is going to be far greater and, and it was the council's intent. That we try to help as many people as we can at the low end of the spectrum. Now, one of the things I said Monday was that this is going to cost the city. This will be taken off the top of the revenues that come in from the city services fund. So it's just something to be aware of. It's, uh, it's a judgment, you know, it's a decision the council has to make as to whether they want to. To provide this kind of assistance. Uh, but our, our recommendation was that you approve it as, as, uh, as it's been designed.
Yeah, I guess I just missed the part about how. It was gonna be like tenfold, but I mean, I have nothing against helping the, uh. Uh, lower income and stuff, because we have a lot of people that may need it for a year, but then they're gonna go back to work and not need it, so. Um, so I'm okay. I appreciate for the explanation. Okay, and then, and then, uh, let's see. Nine, A, uh, A, one. I wanna say that. I just wanna thank Larry Tomlin. For his many years of service, his even keeled, level-headed decisions have been greatly appreciated. Uh, during his tenure. Um, I mean, I look back and. The meeting, the first, the only meeting that I can see way back was like twenty-ten. And so he has really served his time. And so I was just saying, you know, I, I wanna make sure that he knows that we really, um, thank him. And if it's okay with you, Mayor, if anyone, if the other councils wanna say something to him, I mean, the other, the other, uh, I don't wanna. Uh, lessen the thanks for the other ones, but Larry has been so good. Uh, meetings that I've attended, he has been so, um, he, he's just very sense, very sensible. And I appreciate that. So it, with your permission, if anybody else wants to say anything, I, I ask them now, but then I can go to my second part.
Wasn't happy, happy. Please, if you have something that you'd like to say, then, uh, recognition of. Of Mr. Tomlin, that so happy to do so.
What I was going to be saying was that I wanted to make sure that all, uh, items nine, A, one, two, three, four, all got recognition by a letter. As we normally do from anybody leaving any commission or committee.
I signed, I, I filled those out already. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's what I meant. Yeah, I just wondered. Uh, because he's been on for so long and really given up a lot of his time. Uh, so if no one else wants to say anything, then, then I would go to nine. B and. I wanna say that. As I stated. Council, Commissioner Tomlin was very good at listening. And making decisions not to his personal agenda, but following codes, laws and what's good for our city. Uh, Counselor Kupczynski's appointment of Ms. Canopa. Does not fit in with the planning commission. In the past, she has been against growth and development and anything that goes with it. I do not believe she is the right, uh, neutral person to be on the planning commission. So because of that, I plan to not vote, uh, on the appointee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Smith, you were, you were Smith, you were next.
Thank you. This goes back to the, um, IGA with community services for low income assistance. Just wanted to remind everyone that, um, as, as to Bessie's concern about people's, um. Uh, being on it, uh, when they don't need it, you need to reapply for, um, the assistance every year. And the, this new agreement also says that if for some reason your income situation changes and you're making more money. Uh, you need to let us know so that, um, you can be removed from the program. So I think that's covered. Thank you.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Well, I, I do have to disagree with Counselor Johnson's, uh. Reading of Sharon Canopa on the planning commission. I reached out to several people. Uh, who absolutely turned down the opportunity to be on the planning commission, uh, for all sorts of reasons. And reaching out into Ward Two, um, based on her previous qualifications and how she has worked through systems and everything else. I don't, I couldn't find anybody more knowledgeable whatsoever in Ward Two, and I have no qualms about recommending her. Uh, and I freely state that she and I have had some serious loggerhead, uh, discussions over the years. And will continue to have, uh, uh, strong differences of opinion. But I think she's eminently qualified to be on the planning commission. She stands as my appointee.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes, uh, as I said in, in our Monday meeting. To go. We should pick from our ward, but if you can't, you can go outside your ward. To find someone, uh, yes, qualified, that's, and that kind of, uh, went by. For some reason, uh, Monday, and so I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, so we'll be bringing those back next time, apparently. So do you vote today, uh, city attorney?
Alex? You can go ahead then and get a motion to adopt the remaining items of the consent calendar. And have that voted on.
Counselor Johnson?
Okay, I don't, I don't want to, I don't wanna do them all at one time. I would like to do, make a.
Well, there he is.
Yep, I'm back in.
All right, welcome back. Yeah, I'd move for the adoption of the consent calendar of one. A. One through four. And D. At this time.
There, there a second?
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no.
And then I would like to make a motion to not approve. Uh, the appointment of Sharon Canopa to the planning commission.
There's a motion, second?
I'm going to second that. With all due respect to the former mayor. I, uh, I just feel like this maybe isn't the best time. I think, uh. This is just my opinion, but I think that, um. It would be wise. To find another appointee and just let her s- stay outside for a time. It hasn't even been a year. And I, I, again, I have much respect for her, but I just, I would say. Um, I think we can find another qualified individual. For now.
All those in favor and not appointing the former mayor Canopa to the planning commission, say aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. Did you capture the vote, Allison?
Like a roll call?
Roll calls were requested.
I'm happy to do a roll call. All right. Counselor Kupczynski. Counselor Johnson.
Okay, now which way? Is it, okay? Points with the yes, all right? That's confusing.
Counselor Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Olson.
I'm gonna pass.
Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
Uh, it's four in favor and one against and one abstained.
Motion passes.
The motion to not. Approve Sharon Canopa's appointment passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, counsel. Uh, staff report, uh, flood plain outreach, uh, David Martino and Scott White, page one sixteen to one twenty-two.
Hello again. Um, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. This is something that is brought to city council, uh, every year. And this, uh, document was prepared by the flood plain administrator, Melissa Anderson. Prior to her departure from the city. And as you may recall, Melissa Anderson was very diligent and tracking, um, activities for the city's community rating system. Um, her efforts have earned us a class five rating, which is only shared with three other cities in Oregon. Which are Corvallis, Portland and Salem. So Albany is, is the fourth city that's, uh, a class five, uh, rating. And a good reason for that rating is the public outreach that took place every year. So there would be, uh, trainings, there would be outreach and like, uh, the farmer's markets. Uh, the city bridges newsletter. There was also outreach activities that are taking increasing advantage of social media. And we're finding that that's a, a really good effective way to get the word out about flooding. And, um, also at a minimum of cost and, and resources. And so, uh, this information is provided to you in a cover memo. And you'll see the activities that have been undertaken in the past year. Um, Melissa's not here, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions if you have any on these.
Hey, Counselor Smith is first.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, report mentions using the city newsletter, which does not currently exist. Is it coming back? I know Matt has said it's coming back sometime, but I, I wanted to find out if we have a, a, uh, better ETA for that. Thank you.
Uh, Matt Harrington, please.
Sure. Um, our goal is to bring that back around the beginning of next year. So, um, more to come. Yep. That's our goal.
Excellent, thank you. Um, next on the agenda item, which we're gonna, we're gonna do there and see, we'll find the word to do with that one. Is that just informational without the vote or anything, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, so next item number eleven is business from the council on my screen, Counselor Kupczynski's first.
Not at this time.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Johnson?
Uh, yes, I did have something. First of all, I wanna say how pleasant it was to start the meeting with some good things. You know, the life saving awards, the citizen awards, I mean. I'm so glad they, even, even if I have to do it virtually, it's nice to see. And so, um. Just applaud everyone that was involved. And then the other thing I have is, I've been going back and forth to Corvallis, uh, for doctor appointments and stuff. And, um, coming back from, okay, ninety-nine W, coming back into town. There is a, an ODOT sign about the veterans, uh. Highway or something. And there is an unlit flag on that. And that bothers me every time I go by. My dad would, um, be turning over in his grave if he saw that. So I just wondered if somebody could, um, contact ODOT and ask them to either light it or take it down.
Thanks for that, Counselor Johnson.
You bet. All right, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Novak, you're next up in the window.
Thank you, sir. I actually have two items this evening. Uh, first of all, one of my constituents asked recently, when, when is the city going to reinstate council meetings on channel twenty-eight? And I promised them that I would find out if staff wouldn't mind, uh, doing some follow-up.
So I see the city manager has his hand up, so I'll let him go.
Yes, uh, channel twenty-eight is, is a relic of the past now. That's not going to resume, uh, the amount of effort that it took to make that, uh, work. And the amount of people that we surveyed that actually watched it, uh, that return on investment wasn't there at all.
Aren't they required, though, to have a public station?
Uh, no, not required. I think the cable, I think what you might be thinking of is the cable company is required to provide access for that. You remember that, that goes back to the sixties and seventies. But we have, you remember that, that goes back to the sixties and seventies and a lot of stuff has happened since then technologically. We've got all kinds of other ways to get information out. So we just can't keep adding because it adds workload and we just don't have the resources to take care of every one of them. So that was one of the low costs, the low hanging pieces of fruit that we could stop doing.
Well, I know that for people like this particular constituent and any others who are old school as she is, that is going to be very sad news indeed. Not everyone is making use or can make use of the latest technologies and I, I understand where you need to cut what you can, but I, I'm a little bit sad to hear that, that I'll have to report to her that the city has decided that that will not be coming back ever.
And, and please feel free to ask her to call me and voice her concern. I'd be happy to talk to her.
Okay, well, maybe, yeah, maybe you can come up with something that will help her because that would be great. She does like, she's actually someone who would watch that channel and follow what's going on in that way. So the other thing that I wanted to mention on my Business of the Public is tomorrow is National First Responders Day, which matches up nicely with how our meeting opened today. And I want to thank the head of our Albany Downtown Association, Lisa Grotto, for bringing that to my attention because certainly we all have a lot of respect for our first responders and we are very grateful to them. Thank you. That's all I
That was not on my list, Counselor Novak. I've got a long list, too, so I'll make sure I fix that. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Olson, you're next on my window.
Uh, yes, I might turn on. Yeah.
Yes, you are.
Every once in a while, channel surfing, I come across channel twenty-eight. And it says something about the city of Albany there. And I'm wondering if we're not going to use it. Should we get rid of it? And, but it does seem to me that we ought to be able to come up with something fairly inexpensively to advertise our city and may perhaps make people feel better about about our city. So seems like one way or the other, we ought to do something with it or perhaps have a discussion about getting away from it.
City manager, go ahead.
City of Corvallis is right next door to it, and they've got stuff. And you wonder how come the city of Corvallis can do it and we can't?
Yeah, we would love to have the city of Corvallis budget. We really would. But I, I tell you, we'll explore options as to what we can do with channel twenty-eight and we'll, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that anything else, Counselor Olson? All right, thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
Thank you. I was just wanting to ask about, we, you, you said it was Native American Heritage Month. And so I was wondering, it mentioned in there activities that are planned. And I was wondering if we could highlight any of those activities that were planned for, for the month of November.
So I would ask Council, Chair Stephanie Norton to comment. I think she's, she's listening, but she doesn't hear us. Well, I've been invited to, personally, I've been invited to stuff over in Philomena. And so I'll get that out to you. I'll talk to the mayor over there and get something out for us.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's the Counselor Johnson. Are we go? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I did. Just Counselor Smith, I think.
And Counselor Smith?
Counselor Smith has nothing this evening.
So I just had a couple of things, if you don't mind. I got a report from some Ward Two residents of crime theft activity in their neighborhood and they're concerned about it. They're former neighborhood watch. And so I would ask to speak, I would like to speak with Counselor Olson and Counselor Novak about it. I'll just give you a call and let you know. And also I received some written notice, wrote some information tonight that I will share with the chief of police in both of you, so you guys are aware of it. But that was, that was one thing. I also wanted to commend Albany Police Department and law enforcement agencies for the second arrest in the murder case that took place over at Timberland Park. We know our men and women in uniform, our public servants put themselves at risk with chasing down someone, apprehending someone that's allegedly committed a murder is a high-stress situation. And I do appreciate the work that they do on behalf of us all in Albany. And the last thing is that Halloween is coming up. And so if you're going to give candy away, be as safe as possible and help the children enjoy the Halloween festivities. And I'd like all of you to have a great weekend. And I will then turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, for Counselor Bartholomew, if you watch the social media channels, and I'm sure that if there are events for Native American History Month, we'll, we'll be publicizing, helping to publicize those. I wanted to remind you again, as I did on Monday night, of the next community conversation, which will be November fourth at five o'clock at Deluxe. And you could say, you could describe that conversation as being community development focused, and we'll be talking about the housing affordability study or Housing Affordability Task Force, East Albany Plan and the Water Avenue Project. And then lastly, I have to tell you that I'm going to be taking a couple of days of leave. And that's November eighth, ninth and tenth. And so I will miss the next Monday and Wednesday. And Chief Shane Wooton will be acting city manager for the duration. So thank you, Mayor. That's all. Go ahead.
So because he said that, somebody has a birthday coming up and I want to wish you a happy birthday since you won't be here for us to do that. Oh, I, I would say, I would add one thing. The Monday night meeting for the parade, the reverse parade this year starts at seven PM. There's a lot of things going on. So if you'd like to find out what's going on, please come to YMC at seven PM. Next is the, next meeting dates are Monday, November eighth at four PM is a work session and was in November tenth at six PM, the next regular meeting. And I'll call for the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you all for attending this evening. And I know we're having technical difficulties, but we'll work through it and be better together going forward. Thank you all very much and have a great evening.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.